Okay, we will call the January 10th, 2023, meeting of the Albany School Board to order. We'll be looking for an approval of the minutes from 11:00, 8:22. Will you get a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that. Any discussion, concerns, changes? I have none, seeing none. Vote to approve?
I vote yes.
I vote as well. Item three on the agenda, any public comment? Any board member comment? We signed the checks and the manifest, that's all taking care of business affairs. Attendance at meetings.
You had seven, Dan had seven at the last time, so I don't know.
What did we do? Let's see. I would have gone to any SAU meeting, and that's about it, if there was one. I can't remember. I don't know, it was kind of raining on the holidays, right?
You had one in December.
Yeah.
The budget.
Okay.
You were there for that.
I don't think I would say that.
I don't think you were there for that one.
Curtis was there, I think.
Yeah.
Was there one in November, Kevin? I have one here, it's 11:10 at 6:00 P.M.
You're correct, yep.
Okay.
That's right.
Were you that one as well?
I would have been, yeah.
So, two for you, and one for you, and one for Curtis.
Okay. And there wasn't an executive meeting that night, was there?
No.
Okay.
I know that we had discussed at one of the last meetings about changing this tally system of meetings to be more aligned with what other towns are doing. I don't know, when would be the appropriate time to make a motion to change that?
We should probably send it to a study committee and then evaluate it.
Get some public input.
Yeah, we'll take a tele talk. I mean, whatever, if you want. I think it's only fair to discuss it when Curtis is here.
Right, yeah, sure, and I think Curtis, last time he was here, I'm sure he was on board with that too, not only his people.
Well, the guys that don't come are always in favor of that decision, but same as the people that do.
But I don't know if it's, shouldn't we make it something for the next fiscal that's coming up at the town meeting, would that be appropriate?
You could do it anytime you want. I mean, you could put as many...
It might change.
You have $1,600. Typically, other districts will do a little bit more for the chair.
Well, I'm thinking maybe we could...
So you could do six, five, five, if you wanted.
Is it too late to have something put in? Do we have to put anything into the school meeting?
We could do that, yeah, we could do that tonight, the last day is the seventh, right?
Okay, well then...
I don't know if you want to go to the public for a vote on that.
No.
I mean, it's up to you guys.
No, I was thinking just putting it in there as information that we changed.
Typically, those are things that the people have to vote on, so it would be kind of weird just to put something in like that.
You could make a motion when Curtis is here, next meeting.
Okay.
Make a motion, put a proposal. I'll come up with a couple different options.
Okay, sounds good.
And then you can do with it as you'd like.
Right.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay, so we have a review of draft number one of the 2324 proposed budget.
Yeah, let me just take a note. So you folks have copies of the budget, and anybody else's hard copies here, people want And then there's also this document that I usually do on an annual basis for you guys, kind of giving you a little historical perspective, a couple of those, keep one. And that just gives you number of students, percentages, tax rates, and all those things. So yes, we'll go through the budget, if you will. You have your, obviously, most of your costs are very fixed costs. And you can take a look at your elementary tuition is up, middle school tuition is down, and your high school, excuse me, middle school's up, and high school is down. Obviously, it fluctuates based upon the ADM and the equalized valuation, so if you flip to the back page, it will tell you, you know, you're down a couple students, and overall tuition is up. That has a percentage breakdown. The biggest thing is the elementary, I mean, middle school tuition. So you have a little bit more, another percentage or so at the middle school level, their enrollment is declined a little bit more, so their per pupil cost goes up. The good news is the high school dropped pretty significantly. You also have less students there, so the per pupil for the high school dropped down.
So...
Yep.
This year, we're paying $630, $600 at the elementary school.
Correct.
It was jumping up, almost $200,000.
Yes.
We've lost 10 students there.
No, two.
Since when?
Last year. If you take a look on this sheet right here, Tim. Because remember, those are, you're using, last year's number of students. So as of June 30th, 2022, you had 42.72 students. You may have less students this year.
We do.
Right, that will go into next year's calculation.
2425.
That's correct, yeah.
So we're going up two students, and that's costing us $200,000?
Yeah.
Why?
Because of the way the tuition calculations were done, there are less students. So there wasn't a correlative reduction in the operating budget with the number of students in decline. That's really what it comes down to.
That's staggering.
The bonds, obviously, the high school bond continues to creep down, as do the middle and the high school bond go down. The next year will be the last year of the high school, middle school bond in the budget, so that will go away. And then you'll see the trust funds are the same trust funds that, you know, it's the same, basically the same number each year. You do have a decline in special education, and you'll see line 12, the tuition line for special ed drops significantly, about $100,000 there. We budget for services for students, and those are known by the IEPs of the students projecting forward. Psych services, minor changes there, speech services actually dropped down, about close to $5,000. OT, PT services dropped about $2,500. And then you get to your school board services, lines 16 through 22, and those are essentially the same moving forward. SEU's up a couple hundred bucks, about $1,000. And then you slip to your transportation, again, that's based upon the contract that you have with Eldridge, and that gets you the overall budget. And overall, it's, you know, when you go to the, just the general fund total without any other parts, it's up 0.781 percent. And if you throw in the grants, you'll see it's actually decreased. But that includes the special ed reserve fund, so if you take that out, you're up about 1.5 percent over last year.
Okay, where is the line for the special ed reserve fund? I'm just, I gotta look at this.
So you have 140, well, on...
Is it on here?
Page two, you put in 15, 10,500, no, 15,000 last year.
Right.
So that, that really is, if you take that out, and you do an apples-to-apples comparison, it's up about 1.5 percent.
Okay, because I'm not seeing a real number on that, I'm just seeing the contribution that we made.
Yeah, so you have $141,552 in there right now, yeah.
And you got to get 141...
141,552, and that's, that's real time, pretty close to it.
On item 5C, for the proposed warrant articles, if we go over those now, and then there's a discussion further on in the meeting about wanting to place something on there, we can go back to it?
So, right, so right now, you have a draft of the warrant articles.
Yep.
And basically, this goes through the process. Tonight, you're recommending things to go to a public hearing.
Right.
So you can add things here, you can actually add things after the, well, you'd have to, if you're going to add another article, you have to do it before February 7th.
February 7th.
Right, yeah, but you could do that tonight, you could do that, you know, somebody could do it by petition article.
I wanna look at that, that's some of the statistics that Kevin provides to us, percentages and stuff.
Is he able to say it?
Yeah, yeah, it's just one sheet, double sided.
Okay, so item 5C, we go over the proposed warrant articles. Habitants of the School District of Albany, County Carroll, State of New Hampshire, qualified to vote on district affairs, notified to vote for school district offices at the town hall in Albany on the 14th day of March 2023. Polls will open at 10:00 A.M., not closed before 6:00 P.M. Article one, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Article two, to elect a clerk for the ensuing year. Article three, to elect one member of the school board for the ensuing three years.
I think that's Curtis's.
Yeah.
Is it Curtis's?
I believe so.
Article four, to elect a treasurer for the ensuing year. You're also notified to meet at the same place at 7:00 P.M. to act upon the following subjects. Article six, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum What's the bottom number? $1,900, what is it?
715?
Yep. $1,900. So there's no nine between the one and the seven?
There's no nine at all.
No.
Okay, I thought that's what you were saying, I thought you were saying one, nine, okay.
$1,715,520.
Okay, all right. Okay. See if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,715,520 for the support of schools, for the payment of salaries, for the school district officials and agents, and for the payment of the statutory obligations of the district with... Number offsetting for the grants?
Yeah. That'd be $28,480.
$28,480 offsetting this amount from various grants. This article does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles. Majority vote required, recommended by the school board.
So somebody would need to make a motion to place those numbers on articles.
Okay, I will make a motion to place those numbers on Article six for the upcoming school meeting.
I will second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote on the Article six?
I will vote yes.
Also in favor. Article seven, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of, typically, this is $15,000 to be placed in the capital reserve fund for special ed previously established for this purpose, majority vote required.
I will make a motion to appropriate $15,000 for the special education fund, to be placed in the capital reserve fund for special education.
I am not going to second that, I don't think that we should be putting any money into that, we have over $140,000 in there right now. I mean, I think that's, that's quite a bit of money.
It is, but I, you know, I mean, I think the one unknown of this budget is special education, and it would not take a significant one student with some serious problems or anything like that that could, I mean, I would hate to have to go back and have a special article present to the town to raise the funds for special education if something like that were to occur. I think that's the whole point of keeping that balance at a good level.
I don't disagree, I think at $140,000, I don't think $15,000 is going to make that much difference, I think if we had 155 in there, we'd still be coming back in town if this cost was that significant.
Okay.
So we're gonna remove part of something, we won't place that on?
I mean, I'm gonna vote yes on it, but if it's gonna vote no...
Well, if there's no second, then there's no...
Right, so we'll just have to remove that, yeah.
Okay, and then Article eight is to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Okay, Kevin, superintendent's report?
Were you gonna add another?
I am, but that's gonna come after the school options committee report.
Okay, so I just have a couple things, if you go to the SEU9 website, we updated all the SIR plane funds, we had to reallocate for Conway, some for Albany, you guys have such little money, we really didn't make any changes there, but there were some, some pretty significant changes, so if you go to the site, you'll be able to see Conway, Bartlett, and Albany. Other than that, a couple things that will be coming up, you do have the SEU9 Executive Board on February 1st, and then there's a full SEU9 Board on the 9th.
Right.
In between then, you probably will be receiving an email with my evaluation, I do encourage everybody who's a board member to go through that process, so look for that, and then I think it goes back to Jack, the instructions will come from Nancy, but my thing is just encourage you folks to fill those things out. Other than that, it's just budget time for everybody, you know, and we'll see where it goes.
Do we have a balance for us on the SIR 2 and 3 funds? Was any money expended?
Very little, you know, hundreds of dollars, you still have to probably, I think it's actually on the website.
Okay.
So I don't want to, I can give you full accounting for it, but you guys didn't have too too much money that was there, and you're receiving, because the kids do go to the Conway schools, you're receiving the benefit of all those programs and all those things, so that's in play.
I know at the last meeting, you had brought up something about putting something out there for people to contact your office, okay?
We did, we sent it out.
Yeah.
We had a couple of people actually respond, and we set them up with some tutoring.
Okay, item seven, any other business, 7A is the school calendar, we don't vote on that.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
We could discuss the school calendar, that's always...
The school calendar?
Death by committee.
Isn't that Kevin's favorite topic of all time?
And 7B, under any other businesses, report from the Albany School Options Committee, so we have Chuck and Anne Marrow, and myself, and Dan, we're all part of the school options committee, and it's kind of crunch time now because of where we are with our tuition contract case six. And I will turn it over to Chuck or Anne to report to the board.
So we have done some work, talking to various founders, as you know, and I think we talked to Madison, and we are gonna recommend a memorandum of understanding, so we've gone through, they've given us data, a calculation per kid costs, we've gone through all the, kind of the matrix that we did previously with all the other schools, and I think we'd like to talk with them further on. Recommending, we go with Madison for, possibly for K-36.
Any questions, concerns?
So this...
It's not a contract.
Right. So this, when would this occur?
When the, three years, three years from now.
It would be 20, the schooliest I in 2026.
26, 27, 28.
I don't think I have any questions, I mean, I think I probably pretty much, you know, know what...
We went through all the, kind of the bust, the special ed, the tuition, what else we go through?
Well, I mean, just to give you some figures that we've worked out, Madison has given us a tuition calculation worksheet that they're using, and, I mean, basically, there, it would come down to about a savings of about $270,000 a year for the town of Albany. That not being the driving force, if you look at some of the school testing and score data there, it's pretty close in, I think in math scores, Madison was below Conway L. In science and in English language arts, they were higher than Conway L., specifically, and then the state average is figured in there as well. So I have to say that I made three attempts to reach out to Conway, it basically boiled down to for the school options committee, Madison or Conway, some of the other options were just not viable, Bartlett is too far.
We've tried to meet with them a bunch of times, right?
Right. Well, and we did, we started out having a conversation with them, and then Joel and Teeny didn't get reelected, and no one kind of picked up the ball, so I approached Joe Moska, and I was told Randy Davison and himself were gonna be conducting the conversations, I never heard from him. And then I went to another meeting, I saw Joe at an SEU9 meeting, and I mentioned something to him, and he said he would be in touch with me. And then I went to another meeting in December, and I spoke under public comment to the Conway Board and asked if someone was gonna be reaching out to us, and I was told they were, and never heard anything from them, so. I'm not sure if we accept the recommendation, how we would word the warrant article, if it would just be worded in the sense that we're looking to give notice to Conway that we will not be pursuing the contract, that we will be terminating the contract in 2026 with Conway, or if we should word it in such a way that we're gonna commit to Madison at this time, I think that might be a little premature.
So a warrant article, if you're going to see, it would be an advisory warrant article, right, that's what it would be. Ultimately, the school board would determine whether you want to opt out of Conway or not, it makes sense if you're gonna get, you want to have the public input on this and see where it goes from there. The only time you would have a warrant article with Madison is if you're obligating future dollars for a number of years, right? So if you have an agreement with Madison, then you would put approval of the tuition contract with Madison on your article. So for example, Jackson does that with Bartlett, right, so they have an agreement for their sixth grade students to go to Bartlett, they usually do a three-year agreement, and at the end of the third year, they always have an article on Jackson and on Bartlett to get approved by both sides. That would be the way that it would work. So you could put an article on there, I guess the question you'd want to define is how you want to word that, and what you're asking for from the town of Albany people, right? Is it, should Albany opt out of the tuition agreement at the end of 2026, if that's the question that you're asking?
Well, I mean, it's not, if it can be simply advisory, I would prefer that to just let them know that as a result of, you know, the work of the school options committee recommendation has been made, and the school board is going forward with terminating the contract with the three-year window period. And then if we get asked at that point through discussion, you know, why and what is going to be happening, where are we gonna go, we can divulge information, but I wouldn't be looking to ask their permission unless that's necessary.
I don't know, I think you'd probably want to get some public input at some point as far as, I mean, Dan's got kids in the school, I don't know if he still do at the elementary school, but...
Not anymore at the elementary, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that I would want a full school board at this point to take a vote and see where we're at as far as a school board, before we commit, like, for instance, tonight, about putting anything on the warrant.
If you did as an advisory, you could say, should the town of Albany, should the Albany school board notify Conway that the... I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what is the question that, because if you're just notifying the town, then you could do it as a public hearing.
I would be in favor of that, I think, yeah, I would like to hear from the town about, to get the input of the town on where they're at as far as, I mean, if it's overwhelmingly for it, then we know where to go, if it's overwhelmingly against it, that would give the board direction on what we should pursue.
The board ultimately can make that decision.
Sure.
Answer the question.
Yeah.
That discussion, or if it gets put on the warrant article, the vote for it happens when?
At your March...
At the March meeting.
Yeah. And again, it would be, it's non-binding, because ultimately, the board is elected to do those things.
Understood.
So we could designate it as a non-binding, like, advisory article?
Should, should the Albany School District terminate the contract for tuition case that had run by, you know, legal, take a look at it, and then you'd get a feel for it, right? So if you get 400 people to vote, and it's 300 to say, absolutely, let's go and go to Madison, then that gives you pretty clear direction.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how specific, what we would want to put in as far as numbers? I mean, just a blanket statement that, then you're just saying, well, do we, living it up to the people of the town, do we want to go for that? Or do we want to put something in that non-binding question about considering that there would be substantial statements of something, you know?
So my understanding of the warrant article is that you only mention numbers if you're gonna be asking the town to approve of the numbers.
Well, they wouldn't be approving any numbers, it would just be a simple stated number.
I think, to be fair, having done this for a while, there are going to be people on both sides who are going to need information from you folks, absolutely. What about my kid who, blah, blah, blah? What about this, what about that? You know, if you, my advice to you folks is, if you opt out, you're right, you want the failsafe of, you need to have a home for your kids, one place or another, right? Because you can't have a...
Ultimate responsibility.
Right, you have to have some type of agreement in there, whether it's, you know, you get something in place with Madison to say, now, does that mean that negotiations end with Conway? No, I mean, there's still opportunity when, could be two years from now, could be in the third year that these towns come together and Conway gets their act together and says, this is what we're gonna do. But if not, then you can move in that direction, so, yeah. So simply by asking the question, it is a non-binding question, it's an advisory question for you folks, because you're the decision makers.
So would this be on, when the voters go to the school meeting, would this be a ballot issue, or would this be a, would this be on this, like, when you go into the vote, you vote for the town issues, you vote for the school issues?
It would go as Article seven on the school district warrant, and it would simply say, should the town of Albany, you know, Conway did this...
should the town of Albany, you know, Conway did this four, five years ago.
No, what I'm asking is, would it be a ballot issue or would it be a, a floor issue?
Depends on how you choose to do it. You could, you could make the decision tonight to say, we're going to send Conway a notification that we're opting out of the K three six tuition contract. You could wait until June to do that. That's up to you folks. If you go beyond June into July, then you're obligated for one more year, right?
Right, but I think my question is if we do put a non-binding question on the warrant, is that simply, how would that be tallied? Would it be tallied as a voice vote, or would it be tallied?
The same way the rest of the ballot, just a hand vote.
It would be a hand vote, okay.
If there's a majority, a large majority, they probably won't count the votes.
Right.
If it's close, they may count each person.
Okay, I just didn't know if that would be, if that would be in the ballot box, or would it be?
Somebody may petition and say.
To have it.
I petition for a secret ballot, too, which I think somebody probably would on a vote like this.
Okay.
And they just have to have about ten signatures and bring it up to the moderator.
So if it doesn't go on to a warrant article, then we, we as the board make the decision anyway, whether to opt out of the contract.
I, I would recommend at least having a public hearing, though. I would. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think so. I think, I would, I would agree with that.
And you have a public hearing coming up in February.
Jim Curran from Madison. My years of history with, with our board, with boards, I, I agree with Kevin a hundred percent, a public hearing. And I think having a public hearing prior to it being on any warrant, so even if it's on the warrant, but having a public hearing so that you can actually have a captive audience to answer those questions bi-directionally prior to them voting. Because you're going to, I think what you're going to run into is a lot of parents who are heated about the issue in one way or another, but you're also going to have your townspeople who are historically, we've always done it this way. So I think if you just have it to a ballot without having a public hearing first, it could get a little, it could get a little hairy and maybe not go the way you would like it to go or think it should go. But I think having a public hearing allows you a lot, a little bit more banter back and forth as to what's good, what's not good.
Yeah, I, I agree that the, the public has to.
Absolutely.
Know about this and weigh in on it, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
My objective is, I just didn't understand the process in terms of, I was always under the impression that it, it had to go to a warrant and be approved by the townspeople, but in looking at the contracts, I see that they are signed by the respective school boards.
When you're obligating monies in the future, that's where you have to really have the, the townspeople weigh in on it.
Right.
Like you could do one-year agreements with, with towns, and you guys can do that. You have to educate your kids, and you can have a one-year agreement with Madison if it expires.
Okay. So seeing that the cutoff for warrant articles is February seventh, which is a week before our, our public hearing, I think it would be prudent to put a non-binding warrant article on and then hold a public hearing as well.
Wouldn't the public hearing come before the?
Yes. No, it would be before the town.
Before the town.
Correct.
And after the public hearing, you can either.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Pull it off, or you can.
That would make sense to me.
You could enhance it a little bit, too, if you.
But we can't add it on completely because of February seventh is the cutoff.
Right, that's right, yeah.
We couldn't add it then.
No.
We could, we could take it off after.
Now, the public hearing, should we put something on the agenda for the public hearing? As, you know, noticing, or how do, how do we, how do we go about that?
I think you'd have to do that.
Cushing your tail, I think you want to let lots of people know.
Yeah, yeah, as many people as possible. What would be the best method of doing that?
How do we normally publicize?
I haven't really participated in a public hearing like that. I mean, this is.
Well, look at what happened with closing of a school in Conway, right? Once the word gets out, you're going to get lots of people there.
Yeah. So I, I believe the process is just the, the notification in the newspaper, and it's probably on the town website for, on, on the, you know, the agenda for the school board, the public hearing.
And that will, that's in February?
That's February fourteenth, and.
And then we can make a determination whether to put anything on the?
We have to make the determination by February seventh to put something on. And as Kevin said, we can enhance it, or we can remove it completely on the fourteenth.
Can't really change the language, but, because they'd have to get approved at the, the state level, too.
Right.
So somebody would need to make a motion to place an article on the warrant, and then we can draft out a little, a little language on there.
Okay. Something down in anticipation of this. Oh, here it is, right here. So I wasn't sure if there was going to have to be a cost element to it. Just rough language to see if the school district will vote to notify Conway School District at its, of its intent to terminate the existing tuition contract agreement by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
And you'd probably want to put K six in there.
Yeah.
So it would be to see if.
The school district.
Residents of Albany.
Will vote to notify the Conway School District of its intent to terminate the existing K-dash-six tuition contract agreement. I guess you can put it on there between Albany and contract, I mean, and Conway by June thirty, twenty twenty-three. In words, if you're giving out, well, no transcript, I don't think. See if it's anything to vote to the county school to terminate a K-six tuition agreement that expires in June of twenty twenty-three.
Tim?
Yes.
Would you want to add something like to the effect of three years from now so that people don't think in June twenty twenty-three, there's, they're no longer going?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I was just thinking that in, in my head.
Three-year notice.
Yeah.
Or, or per the existing tuition contract.
Yeah.
Or this would provide a three-year notice per the existing tuition contract with Conway.
I think I've captured it. And if I have liberty to, you know, like I said, make sure it passes muster with the legal side of things to, and I would, any edits I would send back to you folks, but.
Yeah, and the fact that it would be non-binding is, will be stipulated in there as well?
Yeah, this is advisory.
Okay. So is that something we have to, we would have to add tonight and read into?
No, I'll, I'll put a note that says advisory article only, yeah.
So Dan and I don't need to vote on that tonight to add it to the warrant?
Yes, yes.
We need to vote to add it in.
Yes, that's what I was asking.
We're not voting in favor or anything.
No, 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 no. I agree, just to put it in.
Yeah.
Okay, so Article seven on the Albany School District warrant of the state of New Hampshire, I will refer to Superintendent Richard to read the, the verbiage of Article seven as proposed.
Yeah, so there was a motion to place it on there?
Do you want to, you want to read it first, Dan?
Yeah, because it's, yeah, just to get the discussion con formalized, somebody needs to make a motion to add this to the article. We'll read it and then, then you can vote to place it.
So this would, okay, so this would be Article eight, or?
Article seven. You removed the current Article seven already.
Okay, because Article seven was to vote and, vote and raise the appropriate sum.
For special ed.
For special ed, okay.
Right, so that, that one's removed, so this becomes the new Article seven.
I see, okay, yes, okay. Yep, nope.
All right, I will make a motion to place the.
Okay, I will second it.
Okay, now, the article reads, "To see if the residents of Albany will vote to notify the Conway School District to terminate the K-six tuition agreement that expires in June of twenty twenty-six. This would provide three-year notice as written in the existing contract with Conway." This is an advisory article only.
Okay, okay. Any discussion on that or concerns? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
I'll vote yes.
I will also vote to approve.
So it just, if I might.
Yes.
Is there a written report or summary? Because I would imagine I will be receiving, or I can direct all, all inquiries back to you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay. And is there anything for the minutes to go in from the ASOC committee?
Um, do you have anything?
Summary report, executive summary report, or anything like that?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Okay, um, seven C, the next meeting is February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at 5:30 PM. That's a board meeting and budget hearing. That will be the public hearing.
What is the date on that?
Uh, February fourteenth.
Downtown stay, buddy.
Five thirty PM.
That's here?
Yes. And the school district annual meeting is on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. Item eight, public comment. No public comment. We have no non-public for this evening. And a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All of us in favor?
Aye.